Okay, we're ready. We're ready to start the continued public hearing for 441 Glen Road, RTFA. Before we start the presentation, we've given this about 45 minutes of time. I'd like to just set the ground rules, usual ground rules. If you guys could go through the changes in the next 20 minutes or so, that would be great. That would then let the board have 20 minutes, 15, 20 minutes to ask questions, make comments, and then open it up to the audience for their comments. Before that, just a quick, I guess I would call it a notification. The last couple of sessions, I raised a question about the property, which is that the zoning Board of Appeals reconfigured the lot lines in a previous decision on the property. And my question was, does that, did that reconfiguration create, in essence, a new non-conforming lot where this house is being proposed? And I want, let me just go through it. And I wanted to get an opinion from town council on that because I don't, I'm not an attorney and I don't know, but I thought it was worth asking. So Betsy and I contacted Joel Bard, a compliment of Paige. Rather than my speed, trying to paraphrase what he said, we've gotten, Betsy got an email back from town council this afternoon relative to the answer to that question. So I thought I would read that email into the record. And then we can proceed on the basis of town council's advice. Okay? All right, this is an email to Betsy from dated this afternoon. Hello, Betsy. Al called a short while after we spoke. I reported to you and I had, I reported that you and I had discussed the issue after my initial reviews of your email where she asked the question. I gave Al my preliminary opinion, which is that the property has most likely lost its status as a non-conforming structure and will need a variance rather than a special permit. I would not, however, be able to provide a formal opinion for tonight's meeting. Further, I suggested to Al that the planning board advise the applicant that they may not be applying for the right permit, that they may need a variance rather than a special permit. The applicant can then decide what to do. Variances are much harder to get than special permits. If they're motivated of butters following the permitting for this project, the applicant would be proceeding at his peril. This may be a better approach than to dictate to the applicant what permit they need, given that this is a fairly technical question. If the planning board decides that they want a written opinion, we can provide it. So this is a game changer because, for one thing, typically site plan review doesn't precede a variance application, among other things. But it's no longer a special permit on, for a pre-existing non-conforming house. It's a new lot. And so I, without putting you on the hot seat, the question is, do you want to go forward with this process under these circumstances?
Having spoken to my counsel Jonathan Wright, he told me that it would be a special permit, not a variance. So unfortunately, he just left, I guess if he'd stayed.
He's right out there if you want to grab him real quick.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to have to go by what town council advises. He's going to come in and say he doesn't agree with town council.
Right.
Can I say, the way it was characterized to me by Joel Bard this afternoon, this is, this is not the first time compliment of Paige has accounted this kind of situation. And this is their considered opinion about, about the variance process, so.
Actually, oddly enough, about a week ago, some, there's a planner's web surf and somebody had a form A plan where, a similar situation where a grandfathered lot that didn't have an affrontage was changed. And there was this whole debate as to, or the, a couple of planners questioned, you know, which would it be? Would it be a variance or a special permit? And is the, if the lot lines change, does the grandfathering disappear?
Was the variance.
And the general approach was, or the general feeling of the majority of the planners that were funded was that the grandfatherage lost.
Right. We, the background on this, Jonathan, is we asked the question, would the lot line change, does that, does that make this, in essence, a new law requiring a variance? And Betsy and I have gotten an opinion back from town council, and this is apparently, according to John, what Joel Bard is telling me, this is compliment of Paige's position on this, that this, because of the lot line change, this requires a variance, not a special permit. So.
I can, I can check with him. Mark talked to me briefly on this today and it seemed directly analogous to Chestnut, where there is a variance and Joel, when they reconfigured the frontage, making it non-conforming, there's variance to make it, make it legal. And then when the client went in to put in a new house, Joel said, because the subject of variance was the frontage in the house, which complied with everything, setbacks, everything, had nothing to do with it, it was a special permit, that it can get to the address, it was Fagel, who was the owner, but it was directly in how it is.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, yeah. So it was the exact same citrus. So I'm surprised I could talk to Joel.
Joel says they've got a couple analogous situations right now with compliment of Paige is taking that position. We don't know. I'm not an attorney. Betsy's not an attorney. It seemed like it was a question worth asking because this is, you know, new territory. So that's what, that's where we are. So the, so the decision here is, according to Joel, he wrote an email here, according to Joel, if Mark continues, he's continuing at his peril because he may be, this typically, as you know, variance applications precede site plan review. In this case, if he's, Mark is applying under the special permit process, so site plan review is preceding the special permit. So he would be proceeding at his own risk. And the question to Mark is, do you want to proceed under those conditions or do you want to back off and let it work itself out? It's his decision.
I would think where the big cost of time and money for the presentation on site plan approval is the upfront pulling it all together, I'm assuming one of them, see, but I can't speak for.
Well, of course, if you get a variance, that, all that pulling it together and the materials and all that will not be wasted, it'll just be delayed. But if you don't get a variance, then.
It's always the time.
And it's just, it's just so much easier. It's the same though with a special permit. In both cases, they're taking a risk that the Board of Appeals gives thumbs down.
But the standards for variance are, are a lot stiffer.
Are tougher. I'll, if I could get a copy of the email, because there's certainly been reliance on a couple properties on that specific ruling by Joel, which was about three years ago, on Chestnut Street. Because he was, because he overruled the prior building inspector, Ron Moore, who was saying that if a lot, if has any type of variance, anything going forward needs a variance, which never thought made a whole lot of sense. We just needed a ruling on it. And Joel said, no.
I don't know the situation in there and we're not attorneys anyway, so.
So I'll contact Betsy to get a copy of the email. And I'll send, I guess I'll send it to my inquiry, to you, Betsy, because I know he needs authorization to respond to me.
Yeah. So what do you want to do?
Well, we're all here, it's the board prepared to listen to what we've done and if we've reached that point, vote.
What if we did this, Mark? I'm just, I'm just throwing this out here, you know? We could hear the presentation, but maybe not, you know, then continue it until this is resolved rather than giving you marching orders to do more work. I don't know exactly how to advise you on that.
I don't think we could do more than that.
It sounds like no matter what we do tonight, you're not prepared to vote because until this issue gets settled.
We don't know.
We'll understand what we can solve.
That's right.
But we are all here, I think you might as well.
All right, but just understand, we'll get, we'll have, maybe we won't be making a lot of comments tonight. We may have to go through all this again, you know, we probably will, when this gets resolved, so.
Well, we have neighbors, everybody's here.
Okay. All right, so, good, then we now have about a half an hour. So if you could run through it 15 minutes, that'd be great.
Sounds good. Eric Swenson from McDowell Company. So what we have for you today are two options, option A and option B. Option A is something that we had shown you in the past, except pushing it as far into the site as we can. Option B takes into consideration some considerations that you guys had given us and we'll show you, we'll show you that in a second. So with, with option A, it's the garage turned to the side here.
Side load.
Yep, side loaded garage. What we have, we have what you've seen before, front court, a side court. We reduced the side court a little bit, pushed the full property, or the full house to, towards the septic system, changed the septic system so it's a different kind, so we're able to get closer to that, to the, to that area. And then that leaves us from the setback line now 36.2 feet, whereas when we first originally submitted, we were six inches. So we've come 36 feet off of our original submission.
You lost the pool, right?
Yes, that's the most important thing. We removed the pool out of both plans and then, in keeping with that, we're able to regrade some of the rear as well as reduce square footage, improve pervious. And as you see the elevation here, it shows the front of the house with how the garage is situated, as you can see in this layout here. And then we flip over to option B. Now, option B gets rid of the front, gets rid of the pool. We've gotten rid of the front court and provided a parking court in this area with a pull-off for front door access. And then, as you can see in the elevation, turn the garage doors facing this way. Unfortunately, what this does is it orients the house, it increases the mass of the front of the house to this neighbor. At that point, so we're now impeding on this neighbor while trying to facilitate this neighbor here. So there's kind of a catch-22 working here. Now, I, in doing so, we were able to push the house back a little bit further into the site to account for the court here. And we're now only 47 feet from the setback line, so we're 10 feet further from the setback line than the other property. In terms of grading and removal of soils and some of the blasting work to do in the back, both of these plans are very similar. I think the square footage difference due to the reducedage of the court is how much?
It's approximately 500 square.
500 square feet. And then there's only about 100 square feet of site removal.
Correct, about 100 cubic yards.
100 cubic yards there.
In both options?
No, from one to the other.
Option B has slightly more work involved.
Yeah, this one has slightly more with work, slightly less impervious. And then obviously, the other plan is the inverse of that.
But it looks like both houses sit in the same, the same elevation, basically.
They do sit at the same elevation. And that is for a number of reasons. One, we have to get up the grade and into the house here, into the garage. And two, in moving this around the site, we would be creating more cut, so we would be removing more material. This sits at a really nice plane on the site where we're taking some, some material from here and being able to put it into the front at that point.
Isn't this house 1.2 feet higher than?
Because we had to push it back into the site, the ridge line, the full house height is about 1.2 feet higher.
Above, above, the natural grade before construction?
No, I'm sorry, there's two options. A is the side loaded garage, the average natural grade is 278. And B, which we'll add now, is the front loaded garage, is 1.2 feet higher. As a result of that, so everything's higher by a foot. Now, this, I'm just going to show a section. First, I'll show a graphic that we haven't shown before. I just want to, want to, so you guys see the scale of the footprint compared to existing houses and some neighboring houses. And these lines that you see surrounding here are from our first submission, the amount of disturbance, disturbed area that we have given back. And we saved about 30 trees in that area, in those areas. And as you can see, there's quite a bit of wooded area here that will be maintained as well as additional screening to whichever option that we provide, that you guys choose from. And then I just want to break into a section here. So this is a section coming through 445 Glen Road, which would be the, the house in the front, which would be a section cutting through this, this area here. This shows sightline from the second story of that property. Through evergreen screening, over our proposed screening, all you see is about 8 to 10 percent of the ridge line. And that is on the thinnest part of the house. Now, unfortunately for the other neighbor, they have to look at the full portion of this house with the, if we do option B, which is the front loaded garage.
I'm not quite sure what the difference in impact is on the other neighbor between the two choices.
I can, I can explain that. There's, well, actually, I'll let you on explain that one in terms of this graphic as well as the.
My name's John Gleistin, the house designer architect. On the differences between the two plans, I have before you the original proposed house, which we call option A, which is a side loaded garage. So the main body of the house is the same. And in addition, I just want to point out that apropos comments to follow the contour of the natural grade, which is very slight on this property, very pronounced on other properties, that this end of the house, the, has, the living room wing does step down a foot. So it does step down, but the change in grade is really within two feet. So the house does make an adjustment to the grade, that's just the side. In terms, to answer your question, Chairman, the original design had a side loaded garage and the issue was to get the house further away from the neighbor budding on Glen Road. And along the way, I believe we have found engineering and landscape solutions to push the house, but we have been asked by the board to do a study, which we have done, representing tonight, of turning the garage to the front with the thought of that we wouldn't need this big courtyard between the garage and the septic system. So we've done that study. So the, the basic, to summarize what my landscape architect colleague, Eric Swenson, just said, we've now gotten the side loaded garage, which I repeat is scheme A, to be roughly 37 or 30 feet from the setback, setback line's another 45 feet to the property line. And, and the, when we go to the front loaded garage. Taking that same garage design, but simply rotating it 90 degrees, we increase the bulk of the massing from, and I'll just. From this, where you see a single gable, and the gable itself is smaller than the impact of the actual 24-foot ridge behind, and what you get is a, is a mass of 38-foot roof. So it extends it, obviously, another 12 feet of the garage bay, but it really dramatically almost doubles the massing impact to the neighbor to the east.
Of course, it's the pitch roof, so it's heading away from them.
That is correct, but we are substantially increasing the massing impact, whereas the impact of the massing to the neighbor on Glen Road is really this small building here, which has been stepped down, which is quite different than telling the next door neighbor, you get all of that. So this is really two dramatically different impacts. And if you go back to the plan of the site relationships, and we examine the dimensional differences between these houses, they're rather large for Western standards. We're not exactly cheap by jowling here. This neighbor sees a very small footprint, visual footprint, and this section shows that they see only the upper triangle in the chimney. The other neighbor gets the benefit of 100-plus feet of the side. So I would submit that in terms of balancing the impact of the neighboring butters, that the side loaded garage, which we prefer as the applicant, is a better submission than the front loaded garage. We did the study as requested. These are our recommendations.
The section shows option A.
Correct, but in option A, it doesn't matter whether it's any B because this person will never see the garage.
I know, but the house, with option B, the house moves an additional 10 feet.
10 feet, yeah.
So that's going to further diminish, diminish the impact on the neighbor.
But it also raises the ridge by a foot.
Okay, so speaking of raising the ridge, there's something that doesn't seem quite right because in both options, the finished floor elevation is 280.3 feet. And the difference, that foot difference is in the higher ridge of the main part of the house, and I don't see why that would even change. It has nothing to do with rotating the garage.
The house footprint would have changed, it would have come up. That was a mistake on one of our, so the full house doesn't.
So the civil engineering drawings are wrong because they both show that the grade around the house is 279 something, that the finished floor grade is 280.3, and the architectural also show finished grade being a 280.3.
Correct. And we, our goal for today was to show you two options. We didn't fully think through both options just because we didn't want to have to expend two full options in terms of financial cost for the applicant.
They're within a foot. My, my, our statistics, our sheets, whether the civil engineers right or the landscape were right or the architects were right, is the natural grade in, in the side loaded garage is 278 and, and the front loaded garage is 278.2. Now, I would submit, just for the board's consideration, is that both schemes work as a house. From our perspective, we put all the effort in to make the landscaping, the architecture, and civil engineering work for both. So from our point of view, we would be satisfied with the final decision of board. We have a fine house, we're trying to respond to your concerns and especially the neighbor's concerns. So we would like it all to work. We would say scheme A is our preferred, but we would be satisfied with scheme B. We are completely at the discretion of the board to instruct us on how to proceed.
Do I understand correctly that you've sort of gone partway with both solutions, but you haven't worked out all the engineering for both, you haven't worked out all the landscaping for both, right? You're just looking for direction and then you have to fill in once the direction is determined, is that, is that a fair statement?
Correct. We're 90% on both schemes, but to go to the very final planning board approval stage, we would want, we would, to answer your question, we would be continuing anyway to finalize something, regardless of the zoning question. So this all parallels.
Okay. So you, we're not talking about engineering tonight, we're not going into landscape details or any of the rest of it. We're just going into the impacts of, of one versus the other.
Correct. And to, well, you know, we have this zoning quandary, we'd love to get the board's kind of flavor of which way to go, we would be satisfied with that. But there, but there is, to summarize, two distinctly different impacts on two different neighbors. And so that's the quandary of, of, you know, you know, Sal, King Solomon, where you cut the baby in half and that doesn't satisfy that mother.
Are the occupants of the two houses in question here?
Yes.
Okay. Good, so we can get your input. Any questions from the board, comments from the board?
You touched on the pool being eliminated, did that mean the house is pushed also where the pool was supposed to go?
That allowed us to get a little closer, actually 10 feet closer than we were at the previous meeting.
12 feet, sorry. And this is still in excess of 1,000 cubic yards of cut, is that right? So we're talking about special permits as well, Betsy?
For earth removal, do you need a special permit for the earth removal from the CBA? Okay.
My question is, am I going to be able to see that ridge when I drive down Glen Road?
I don't think so, due to the distance from the road. And it rises uphill. The standard would be dead of winter.
What?
Dead of winter, where there are no leaves.
We just, we just went through a lot of hanks and aggravation over the town center here. And this piece of property is backed up, correct, sort of conservation land, reservoir, am I right? And that other little piece to the right-hand side, which is cut off, is officially now conservation land, am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a sensitive area. This isn't a place in Meadowbrook, it's a development where everything's, this is a sensitive conservation area. And I'm going to see that house, and I don't see anything there now.
I don't think you are going to see it. I mean, we can do a study, but I don't think you will.
Okay, I'm, I'm this neighbor, right here.
What's your name?
Marcy Goldsmith. We do not want to see, my husband and I do not want to see that garage on the front-facing front door. We don't want to see that one. We feel that the plan with the side loaded garage is much more visually appealing. You did a great job trying to balance it out. We think the other plan, we see less of the house. And I cannot understand the concerns, I mean, quite frankly, we work out of the house. Here's my office, here's my living room, here's my bed. I'm going to see this house, and my husband's going to see the house, more than anyone driving up and down Glen Road. And we're going to see it six months out of the year. So we're fine with the side loaded garage because it's going to be a beautiful house. I actually would have a problem a little bit, granted I'm new to Weston in terms I actually would have a problem a little bit, granted, I'm new to Weston in terms of what people see from Glen Road, because I do a lot of watching the cars speed up and down Glen Road, and I don't believe in morning traffic or afternoon traffic. Anyone's going slow enough to see the house, or they're on their phones, and they better not be on their phones and seeing the house, because what could happen? But there haven't been many accidents in front of our house, thankfully. Let's see what else. I do a lot of biking and running and walking, and the street goes downhill. If you're going down from four twenty-five down to Wellesley Street, the pavement is very uneven, and you better be watching the road, or else you're going to wind up going over your handlebars and maybe getting hit by a car. And if you're going uphill, if you're a better biker than I am, like the guys who ride at twenty miles per hour, they're talking to one another, but I'm having to focus on getting up the hill. And so I'm not looking at that house.
That's sufficient.
You know, and when I walk by and run by, I'm more concerned with not being hit by a car or jumping into poison ivy.
My point, Marcy, is this is a piece of conservation land right next to this house, and I'm, I'm kind of concerned at the mass and the height of the house. I mean, I understand you, this is bothering you, but I'm trying to come from the town's perspective, okay?
What, what we can do to alleviate that is add some screening trees along this area here. What that'll do is cut the angle.
You're referring to the conservation land to the north?
Just referring to the whole, because people walk up and down.
Oh, I thought you didn't want to say that.
I don't, I don't want to see the house, but...
They're not coming back Glen Road, they're talking about...
About the walking back end.
Everything in that. I mean, it really will have a huge impact on this piece of land, and we usually really consider that when it's conservation land. And obviously, the previous owner who split this land up felt strongly about this, otherwise why would they have gone through this whole rigmarole for, you know, breaking up a piece of the land, so?
I can, I can answer why they did it.
Yeah.
The new owner was the Curms, I represented them. Their house sold first, they own both houses, the one to the left, they owned, people bought their house, conditioned their offer on splitting up. She really, it's, it's private land subject to a conservation restriction. The, the, the purchaser of this property over here, they conditioned their offer on getting that property, so they wouldn't buy the property until we got the variance to allow this to be split off, so we can convey this section to the, to one of the first houses.
So these people were interested in having...
I was going to say that's a buffer, is it right?
Yeah, I was going to say I snuck in after.
Is that, is that an accurate...
You know, it is, and I think the Curms, the, the people we bought, we live at four fifty-five Glen Road, they owned this piece of land, four forty-one, and our house. And I think because of that concern, someday, who knows what would happen? And so that's part of when we purchased four fifty-five, they offered to basically kind of sell that backend, which really helps, you know, from our standpoint, protect it and protect us and, you know...
And protect the town's.
And the town's conservation land. And so, you know, some of the changes that we've seen, we're actually really happy with the increase, you know, what they, you showed with the green, like how that's gotten, that's increased, you know? Because if you compare, we're kind of up out of the picture there.
And you're over here.
And then the one thing I don't know if you mentioned, I was a little late, is a lot of the drainage that flows down our driveway, that got moved, or that whole kind of collection area has moved. You know, I'm not an engineer, but those are both really helpful from a conservation perspective. So there is a big, I guess, buffer behind that we own that no one can do it, I mean, we can't even do anything to it.
And to add to that, the request of the, what we've done along the tree line is provide it between six and four, and four foot of understory. So we're, we're not just clearing a lot, letting you look into the woods, there is some understory associated with, with, with the property line, and, and it, it, it does help screen the house as you're walking on whatever trails are back there.
And I would actually say, from our perspective, the absence of a pool helps a ton.
And later, when we get to, you know, site plan and landscaping and all that, that will be brought up at that point and stuff. Are there other neighbors? Want to comment?
Well, actually, just hold the thought for one minute, because I just wanted to find out, Steve, you haven't had a chance to, to make a comment.
I have nothing else to say.
All right, then, consultants, is there, are there any appreciable differences between the two options from a landscaping or, or an engineering perspective? I mean, are they, are they about the same?
The landscaping is pretty much the same for both, but if you recall from our last conversation, the concern was the evergreens on the west were arborvitaries because we were so tight.
On the down slope.
Yeah, and I think in either option, we now have plenty of space to go down and meet a evergreen, which is beneficial. But the landscape plan is pretty much the same.
Yeah. Same for engineering, Dr. Saye?
Yeah, it's, and, you know, we're not, with the house shrinking and the program shrinking and pool disappearing, which has been a little bit unsolved, I think, tonight, you know, we're not shrinking the engineering, we're just kind of leaving that as is, so.
The pool house has gone too, that's a big note. I, I didn't mention that either.
Phil Saunders, my wife Lucy is here. Where are the folks who live in this property?
Up here.
I would, before getting to the pros and cons, A and B, I would hope this would not be the end of the story, this choice. What we would like to see is develop back the plan that didn't require digging up three to five thousand cubic yards, maybe only moving a thousand, taking away a thousand, but the amount that's being picked up, piled up, and put back somewhere else, all of which produces noise, dust, extended construction time and what have. It's still part of the plan. And that part, that, that is what we would really like to see in the board, pull the feet and file, coming up with something that just doesn't produce the same level of disturbance. As to if the board decided that you got A and B and you had to choose one and, you know, like it, lump it, we'd actually take A simply because of cars circulating around on the other side of the building, so I don't think, I think this conflict between these two neighbors and the Goldsmiths, I think it's...
A lot of conflict.
No, I think it's... Even if you have this house, you're still thirty or forty feet from the setback line. When I talked to the developer about this, he said, well, it's because of the drainage and irrigation system and the retention plans, and we can't move it any further. I think they could figure out a different way to deal with these things, could actually get the house going together. Which I don't think, I'm not sure it would affect the Goldsmiths, it would be beneficial with the Bartels, because the further you get up in this direction, the more of this conservation land, which is, you know, forest, it becomes part of the screening, because their house is over here in the angle which you're looking at. And of course, it's better for us to just get it further away. The other, just as a point of history in your questions, the reason all this land is under conservation easement, regardless of who owns it now, was because of Lombard's arrangement. Lombard's owned this whole property, and they wanted to preserve it. They, you know, people think I'm making a joke when I'm saying that Mrs. Lombard was out on stalking to a house parrot. I'm not, she walked, she was a wonderful woman, they loved this property, and had considerable financial sacrifice. They, it's in her property, which runs a deed, so that's a basic history of it.
Right.
You also have a letter from the Saunders, in the text.
Okay.
And that was emailed to us.
Maybe we should read that into the record. Here it is. Yeah, it's fairly short.
It says pretty much what it just said.
We, well, we never received that letter.
Well, I'm, I'm about to read it, a minute. This is dated August twenty-eighth from Lucy and Philip Saunders, planning board here, planning board members. At the July sixteen, two thousand and fourteen meeting of the planning board, the board asked the developer to be more creative in coming up with a proposal which would minimize disturbance in vegetation, soil removal, blasting, and grade changes. The developer has submitted two sets of revised plans, one set eliminates the swimming pool, actually, we both do, allowing the house to be moved another sixteen feet from the southerly lot line, which our property abus. The other eliminates the pool, okay, rotates the garage, and moves the structure another twelve feet. The house could still be moved another thirty feet without crossing the northerly setback line. While the revised plans are improvements, the plan still call for a very large house, excavation of several thousand cubic yards of material, and significant leveling of the lot, as have all the developers' previous plans. We do not see these new proposals as responsive to the board's request, and think the developer can do better. In, on another matter, since it is not clear to us whether all of the members of the board have received copies of previous letters written by neighbors, we are taking the liberty of attaching the letters here to they are, and there's a list of four letters. One by Abu Eid and seven other neighbors dated, dated June second, like two thousand and fourteen, another from Martel dated June ninth, like two thousand and fourteen, and then two from the Saunders's dated June seventeenth and July fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We particularly call your attention to the Saunders letter of June seventeenth, which contains specific requests for orders of condition with respect to screening, lighting, hours of work, et cetera. Thank you for allowing us to comment, very truly yours, Lucy and Philip Saunders. So that's the letter. The, just a, a point of clarification, the size of the house is, is something that we are prescribed by actual, actual state statute from, from limiting. So we can't, we can't stipulate that under site plan review. We can look at impacts, such as, as earth removal and, and amount of regrading, so that, that is a legitimate area for us to take a look at. We won't be doing that tonight, however. I think that the direction seems clear, since the neighbors both endorse option A, that that's the direction to head in. We've had a couple of comments, could it be moved still further back? Is there a way to reduce, to make it look more with the existing contours without, without removing quite so much material? Is there, is there a, a scheme that would balance the, the cut and fill more closely? I think those are probably not bad goals to, to head for, if, as, and when the time comes, that that's the right thing to do. But right now, I think, from the beginning of the meeting, the, the issue here is to resolve what the permit is that you guys are, are going for, and then we'll take it from there. So I think the contact from here is with Betsy, at least for the, for the next several days, and what we'll do is we'll continue this hearing in anticipation of, in anticipation of that question to what date?
October first at nine.
October first at nine o'clock. And just to finish, let me just say, I, I appreciate all the concerns of, of the neighbors, but I, I, I really appreciate also that, that, the developer here has made quite a few changes in response to our comments, and while we might not be there yet, I think that, that, you know, I, I appreciate that, that, that such an effort has been made to respond to the, to the concerns that we've expressed in the board. And so with that, I will call it, so, continue to the, to the first of October at nine o'clock.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll just say one thing to, in reference to your letter, the orders of condition generally, normally do include all information about, you know, screening, lighting, hours of work, and et cetera, et cetera. That's standard in any of our letters of condition. So you might want to take a look at some of the ones that have been issued before, because a lot of that's boilerplate kind of language. So, you know, just to let you know that that would be in there anyway, if we get to that.
Maybe that's, maybe out two or three, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you can take a look at, at any, several of our conditions, you can, you can see exactly what the format is.
The format or the...
The content.
The content.
Yep.
Yeah, the hours of work and, and stuff like that are all pro forma, boilerplate, you know, they're, they're prescribed, so.
They're not, they're not something you're, you're going to change?
No.
No.
I mean, we have their sta- we have fairly rigorous standards on construction activities and that sort of thing, and particularly on blasting that exceed the state regulations, as a matter of fact.
And lighting, we always require dark sky issue of lighting, so that, you know, the light goes on the ground where it's supposed to be rather than up, you know, or out, you know.
No floodlights.
You know, things like that, you know.
Timbers.
Yeah. Absolutely. And also, construction, management of construction, there are, there's quite a few stipulations on how that's handled, so.
I'll be happy to learn.
Yeah, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For school, it's going to be a big deal.
I haven't made any decisions, I just asked about the drainage.
Right.
Yeah, it is, because I would go back and say...
Yes, that's how it happened.
Oh, it's made, yes.
You mentioned the old drawings.
Yeah.
Two, yeah.
Yeah.
What side of the street?
Are they looking for a decision?
I don't know.
If you drove from one to the other, you drove down Washington Street.
I drove.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're doing a...
I don't think it's a danger.
You drove down, you wanted to go down Washington Street, which is a major... Lots of little parallel streets on the lot. Take me ten minutes to walk.
Okay. I don't want to be so hard on you. Partly, they just, they were like my understanding of Manchester, as I used to drive, but I had my tollies and every day.
So. Right, and then, yeah, but it's a procedure because it even needs to. They're always going to.
They have a.
Sunset.
Right, but then they were not.
Right. Sunset. Sunset.
Right, but then they were not. So there's a level that was sent out.